Okay. It is now 7:00 PM and I am reconvening to open session and calling to order the regular Board of Education meeting for Indian Prairie School District 204 on Monday, June 14th, 2021. Our next board meeting of education meeting will be held on July 19th and the location will be determined either here or at the center, Kraus Center. So Jeannie, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Fosdick. Ms. Jane.
Here.
Ms. Donahue.
Here.
Ms. Grover.
Here.
Ms. Demming. Mr. Rising. Mr. Carubis.
Here.
We have a quorum. Mr. Carubis, will you lead us in the pledge?
Thanks whoever put the flag up. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have a few board salutes tonight. Ms. Grover, will you share a board salute?
Sure. The board salutes nine District 204 high school seniors who were recently awarded 2021 National Merit Scholarships financed by U.S. Colleges and Universities. We had scholarship winners from each of our District 204 high schools. Matia Valley High School, Sunithi Mohan. Nikwa Valley High School, Anjana Bhadavaj, Nima Darabi, Rohan Jaswal, Piper Jordan, Megan Rajan, Caroline Reynolds, and Ian Zhang. Wobonzi Valley High School, Juliana Canham. Officials of each sponsored college selected their scholarship winners from among the finalists in 2021 National Merit Scholarship Program who plan to attend their institution. These awards provide between $500 and $2,000 annually for up to four years of undergraduate study at the institution financing the scholarship. We congratulate all our National Merit Scholarship winners.
Thank you. Mr. Carubis.
The board salutes two music faculty members who were recently named 2021 Chicagoland Outstanding Music Educators. Megan Lopresto from Hill Middle School Band and the late Will Burke from Wobonzi Valley High School Orchestra. They were nominated by readers of Quarter Notes published by Quinlan and Fabish and selected by a panel of previous award winners. Congratulations to Megan on this stellar achievement and we are reminded again of Will Burke's incredible impact on our students through this recognition.
Thank you. Ms. Fosdick. Okay, our next agenda item is public speaking, but tonight we have no public speaker signed up, so we will move to the consent agenda item and our superintendent report. And we'll start with our superintendent report, Dr. Tally.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Donahue, members of the Board of Education and the Indian Prairie community. Tonight I will start off with my comments remembering two members of the Indian Prairie school community who passed away recently. Ms. Kim Zentmeyer passed away on May 8th, 2021. She retired as a kindergarten teacher from District 207, uh, from the district in 2007. She taught with the school district for 33 years, working at Lietland, Clow, and Springbrook Elementary Schools. And Ms. Virginia Jenny Mayer passed away on May 27th, 2021. She retired as a secretary at Georgetown Elementary School in 2017 after, after having worked in the district for 30 years. She then continued as a substitute for an additional three years. We send our condolences to the families and hope they know that Kim and Jenny made a difference in our district supporting our children. This meeting is the last meeting of the 2020-2021 academic school year. My end of the year video shared my thoughts about this year and my gratitude to the students, parents, and staff. I want to use this meeting to say the following. Though this year was beyond what anyone may have wanted, Indian Prairie has a lot for which to be thankful and a lot to praise as we come to the end of this year. Some of these items include 16 of our students, our National Merit Scholarship winners, and we are still not done with announcements of winners. Our three comprehensive high schools ranked within the six, within 6% of all high schools in the nation, and all three are in the top 50 within the state of Illinois. Ms. Michelle Frost, principal of Patterson Elementary, named the Illinois Principal of the Year by the Illinois Association of Health, Physical Education, Recreation, and Dance. More than 1,200,000 meals were served to our students. We held graduation ceremonies this year. We were able to accomplish some facilities work by replacing aging roofing issues at Meawatt, Fisher, Stullen, and Brooks. Wobonzi Valley High School's literary magazine, Premier, received the designation of excellent from the National Council of Teachers of English. District 204 has been named one of the nation's best communities for music education by the National Association of Music Merchants for the 10th time. District 204 community donated over $60,000 to support students and families in need. Chrome middle school student Eric Flabel entered the Guinness Book World Records with the tallest popsicle stick structure consisting of 1,750 popsicle sticks. Nikwa Valley High School robotics team 2360A won the community award online challenge sponsored by Google. And Matia Valley High School and Still Middle Schools were two of the eight schools in Illinois to be recognized as a 2020 School of Distinction by the Illinois Art Education Association in the inaugural year of the award. I share some of the accomplishments because in spite of the year being a difficult year for everyone, there are great things for which we should be happy and proud. I again thank our staff, our parents, and our students for how they have supported learning this year. Before I end my comments, I would like to ask the Board of Ed to consider the two candidates for positions that I have shared via Board Docs. First, for Assistant Director of Community Relations, I would like you to approve Ms. Zaida Rodriguez. Ms. Rodriguez is coming to us from Aurora Area Interface Food Pantry where she was interim Executive Director, and before that she was the Community Relations Outreach Person for Rush Copley Medical Center for 14 years. Ms. Rodriguez will fill the position that was vacated by Ms. Lisa Berry when she was promoted to Executive Director of Communications. I would also like for you to approve the appointment of Mr. Douglas Wiley as the new comptroller. Mr. Wiley is coming to us from Summit Hill School District 161 where he is the Director of Business Services. He has been in that role for the last five years. Mr. Wiley will be filling the position vacated by Mr. Shipley, who was promoted to Chief School Business Officer. Ms. Donahue, I will send the meeting back to you.
So I need a motion to approve Zaida Rodriguez as Assistant Director of Community Relations as presented.
I move that the Board of Education approve Zaida Rodriguez as Assistant Director of Community Relations as presented.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Could Jeannie please call the roll?
Yes.
Ms. Grover.
Yes.
Ms. Fosdick.
Yes.
Ms. Donahue.
Yes.
Ms. Jane.
So congratulations, the motion passes. Welcome to the district. Is there in the audience? Okay, next I need a motion to approve Douglas Wiley as the comptroller as presented.
I move that the Board of Education approve Douglas Wiley as comptroller as presented.
I second.
Any discussion? Jeannie, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Grover.
Yes.
Ms. Jane.
Yes.
Mr. Carubis.
Yes.
Ms. Donahue.
Yes.
Ms. Fosdick.
Yes.
This motion also passes and congratulations and applause to our board.
Will you two just please stand so everyone can see? It's very difficult to see from the stage. That'd be lovely. Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Mr. Wiley, thank you.
Okay, next we move to our consent agenda items. Please identify yourself as you make your motion or second. I need a motion for the approval of consent agenda items F through W.
This is Natasha Grover. I move that the Board of Education approve consent agenda items F through W as presented.
Your second?
A second.
Any discussion? Okay, Jeannie, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Grover.
Yes.
Ms. Fosdick.
Yes.
Mr. Carubis.
Yes.
Ms. Jane.
Yes.
Ms. Donahue.
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, next we move to our action items. I need a motion to approve the Illinois Association of School Boards Resolution as presented.
I move that Allison do the motion.
I move that the Board of Education approve the proposed 2021 Illinois Association of School Boards Resolution as presented.
I second.
Okay, is there a discussion? Actually, there is. Allison had made a suggestion. Allison, you had indicated prior to the word "heavy," I think you said "potentially."
Yes. I suggested adding the word "potentially" because I don't believe all zeros heavily impact a student's grade collectively. They have that capacity, but I, I, I felt that potentially allows that difference to
Could you give some background, Board Member Grover, on what we're doing here with this agenda item?
Sure, sure. So this is an IASB resolution. Our resolutions are due on June 23rd and we have proposed as a district resolutions before to IASB, and then in November, IASB will vote on the resolutions that they deem should be voted on. And so I'm proposing a resolution regarding no-zero policy. So what, is it up there? So what it states is that the IASB believes that the school districts should prepare all students to succeed and cultivate learning. To that end, IASB urges school districts to consider adopting a policy encouraging students to complete assignments within a reasonable timeframe even after the due date. Providing a zero for late assignments negatively or potentially negatively impacts a student's grade when the focus should be on encouraging student learning. A district policy should be examined to encourage learning and eliminating zeros. And the rationale behind it was because educational inequities exist, creating barriers, barriers in a student's learning, and as educators, the focus should be on whether a student has learned the assignment. So giving a student a zero discourages a student to complete the assignment. So rather than punishing a student, schools should encourage your students to complete work. And if you noticed nationally, there have been several colleges that have done away with SATs and ACTs because they recognize the inequity in testing, and so this would also align with national efforts. But it's a means to encourage students and it's still giving teachers the ability to grade the assignments, but it's telling teachers, you know, let's not give them a zero and let's give them a reasonable time to turn in their assignments.
So the Illinois Association of School Boards has a series of resolutions that they use to guide their actions in the state, and our board has been very active in all the years I've been on the board in submitting resolutions for that organization to consider, including in their materials, which are decided by a vote by all school districts in the state. So Ms. Grover is proposing to send a resolution to IASB related to zero grading policy, and she's looking for our board to agree that we should send that forward for consideration.
Just for clarification, did, the point at which I think adding "potentially" is in actually the rationale itself.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Where it says a student who receives a zero has no incentive to complete the assignment, and the zero grade has a heavy and negative impact. That's where I would add "potentially." You know, I, I do believe there is a consequence for students who choose not to complete assignments, and I think making a difference between a zero, at least adding "potentially" here gives educators the opportunity to give a zero on things that would still show the student, this is missing, you know, there are, there are holes here. Whereas an, an assignment that would have a heavy impact on the grade, it allows more time to complete and actually learn that material.
Okay. I'm okay with adding that word. My thing was, and that's why I didn't, I was coming from like a student-parent perspective and also keeping the teacher in mind where it was, you know, if you don't turn in an assignment, you're going to get a zero, but if you should have the reasonable time to turn in the assignment and it kind of makes it consistent, sets a tone for the teachers and also for the students that they could get a higher grade than a zero. So that's where I was coming from.
So are you modifying your proposal, Natasha, to include that word?
Yes, I can, I can modify that. So it would read, a student who receives a zero has no incentive to complete the assignment, and the zero grade has potential heavy and negative impact. So would I have, would the motion be a new motion then? I'm not sure.
Well, to Allison's point, we're approving the resolution, not the rationale.
Okay.
And with our prior experience, both the resolution, the rationale, and your submission might change in wording as it goes through the resolution committee or at the assembly. So I think if we, I think we can approve the motion as presented and with the understanding amongst all of us that there might be some tweaks in language as long as the concept is there. So I support, I struggled myself with, is it a belief statement? Is it, you know, does it fit somewhere else? Is it appropriate for the Illinois Association of School Boards to be dealing with? But I think a lot of that, those issues will be flushed out at the resolution committee. So I, I understand the purpose and what we're trying to do and I, and I like it. So I would, I would, I would vote in support as is.
Ms. Jane, any other comments?
Uh, no, I think Member Fosdick spoke to my concerns that I think teachers having the autonomy to decide whether a zero is needed is important for us to acknowledge, but I understand the overall purpose of the resolution to be to encourage educators to provide opportunities where students could make up that work as, as much as possible so that they don't have that zero. And so for that overall intent, I, I agree and support.
Okay, any other discussion? Jeannie, will you please take the roll?
Ms. Fosdick.
Yes.
Ms. Jane.
Yes.
Mr. Carubis.
Yes.
Ms. Grover.
Yes.
Ms. Donahue.
Yes. Motion passes. Okay, we will now hear the budget forecast presented by Mr. Matt Shipley.
This is two in a row for me with technical difficulties, so. I, I don't either.
Should we continue with, without this being, should we continue without this being shown since it's on the, on the website?
All right. We got the, we got the gremlins out, I guess, so I will get started while we have it up. Good evening, members of the Board of Education. This is our third and final budget update occurring here in fiscal year 2021. This will be the last budget update before we begin. The formal budget adoption process for the 2021-2022 school year, which will begin next month at the July 19th board meeting. This evening, I'd like to cover district goal number three. That's administration's proposed goal for the 21-22 school year. We will update our operating fund forecast that we've presented to the board originally in February and then most recently at the April 27th board meeting. We'll show both a three-year forecast as well as a one-year focusing specifically on next school year for both revenues and expenditures. We'll operate, we'll update the non-operating funds and go into a little bit of detail on what our plans are for those, for those two funds. That's our debt service and capital projects fund. And then finally, with the budget adoption process starting next month, we will talk through the next steps and that process that will start in July. For proposed district goal, or excuse me, the administration is proposing the following district goal for next school year. We have, and that's that by June 30th of each year, the district will receive the State Board of Education's School Financial Profile Designation of Recognition. This is the highest designation awarded by the State Board of Education. We have had a similar goal for the past several years and believe it's appropriate to continue with this being one of the four district goals. I briefly want to talk through why we believe that achieving recognition status is important for the overall health and well-being of the district. The way the recognition status is awarded focuses on five different ratios which, which assess the financial health of the district. One of the ratios talks about the day's cash on hand, and by achieving recognition status, we're demonstrating that we have enough cash on hand to cover expenditures throughout the school year. Two of the five focus on debt burden. One of the five ratios focuses on short-term debt and one focuses on long-term debt. So again, by achieving recognition status, we are demonstrating a reasonable debt burden on the property tax holders of the district. Included in the, the ratios is a budget comparing your budgeted expenditures to revenues with the goal of achieving a balanced budget, and this does help protect against unpredictable revenue streams. Historically, we've spent a lot of time talking to the Board of Education about some uncertainties associated with the state of Illinois. One of the newer challenges has been managing property tax delays. Both this year and last year, as a result of pandemic, our counties have done things such as extending deadlines, not assessing taxpayers' penalties for delayed payments, and that's, that's created a challenge that, that a once very reliable and timely revenue source has become a little bit more unpredictable. So by maintaining a recognition status, we believe that gives us enough cushion to, to weather some of these short-term delays. The final reason that administration believes we should continue to strive for recognition status is, is to prepare for what, what are seen as potential legislative changes which would impact the long-term health of the district. The two that are highlighted here and the two that are talked about most frequently are the potential for a pension cost shift or the potential for a property tax freeze. I think all board members are aware that we really start every state legislative session talking about these two issues and their potential to be a topic that, that comes up during the state, the state House session or the state Senate session. As of now, we've been lucky that neither of these have passed, but it, it, both are looming and continue to loom over both our district and all districts throughout the state of Illinois. As mentioned, there are five designation indicators, and these are scored from one, with one being the lowest score and four being the highest. And we've just shown how those are, those are allocated or, or how that's balanced as, as part of that score. So fund balance to revenue and expenditure to revenue ratio, or achieving a balanced budget, are both given a 35% weighting. So those are the two highest weights in this financial profile score. The remaining three account for 10%, and these are days' cash on hand, the percent of short-term borrowing activity, ability, and then the long-term debt margin or, or the amount of long-term debt outstanding. So again, just wanted to cover our projections for where we will be on the recognition status, both for the current fiscal year, for fiscal year 2021, which we are wrapping up this month, as well as what we are proposing with this budget that we're presenting this evening. So you could see for all three years presented, both our actual status in fiscal year 20, our estimated status for the current year fiscal year 2021, what we are proposing this evening, all achieve recognition status with a score of 3.9 out of 4. The one indicator where we, we continue to fall a little short is that days' cash on hand number. In order to achieve four, the state board would want greater than 180 days of cash on hand, and as you can see, we've, we're ranging from 166 to 179, so falling anywhere from 14 to one day short of that ratio. I will point out that, that these are based on June 30th numbers each school year. And so one, one thing that, that I think we struggle a little bit with the messaging is on that days' cash on hand and those fund balance to revenue numbers. When we look at those at June 30th, we're looking at those at relatively high points in time because those are after we've received that first property tax installment. So usually I, I like to, to take those numbers and look at them just 30 days earlier as of May 31st, before we've received that, that installment. And just for comparison purposes, as of May 30th, we're generally at about 60 days cash on hand, and our fund- and our fund balance to revenue ratio is generally about 16 to 17%. So really, it, the reason we have to keep those numbers again above 25% and above 180 is really because what those represent is, is relatively high points at June. And if those go below those numbers, we do get to a point in May, late April, through really May or the first week of June, where we're really at a low point and, and potentially risking not being able to meet our financial obligations in the short term. So with that, I'll move on to our three-year operating funds forecast. And I'll point out the, the one change that we've made since we looked at this about six weeks ago in late April is we are starting to see some inflation, and I think anybody who follows the, the news is, is well aware of some of the, the recent trends, whether it's prices of, of timber or, or the gas pump or, or anything else is really, it seems like every day there's sort of a new story popping up about how the increase in economic activity has increased the inflation rate. So we have increased as part of this forecast, the Consumer Price Index to 2.8% for fiscal year 2021. What that does is as CPI is the main driver of our property tax levy, this increases the amount of property tax revenue that we're showing. However, because of the way the levy works, that, the amount that we receive in the levy lags the actual CPI indicator by about 18 months. So by updating that number from 2% to 2.8%, we're not impacting our operating forecast until the back half of fiscal year 2023 and 2024. So one of the challenges we'll get into in a little bit is we look at some of the expenditures that as a district we're incurring right now as we prepare for next school year. They've increased in real time as, again, as a reflection of that Consumer Price Index increasing. We don't see the benefit of that or the, the potential revenue to offset that, again, until the second half of fiscal year 2023, which would be calendar year 2024. Excuse me, calendar year 2023, and then, calendar year 2023, which represents fiscal year 2023 and fiscal year 2024. The other thing I'll point out here is that percentage of revenues, when comparing fund balance to percentage of revenues, does stay relatively consistent all three years. And, and again, that, that means that that recognition status that we're showing, where we would get in fiscal year 2021 and 2022, would also stay at, at a similar amount, that 3.9 number for fiscal year 23 and 24. So next, just want to look specifically at 2022 revenues, so the revenues for next school year. And what I pulled here is what we're currently presenting this evening compared to the February 2021 forecast. That was a forecast we presented at the start of our annual budget cycle here. And just talk through real quickly what's changed over the past four months. So I'll start property taxes, obviously, is the largest revenue source. And the slight change there, we updated the board in April, was due to receiving a little bit more money related to new property than we had initially expected in February. Other local revenue has decreased by about 4.8 million compared to what we presented in February. And that's related to a very specific change related to the National School Lunch Program. When we initially presented in February, we anticipated that we would be back to operating our cafeterias that we had in the past with a large portion of our students paying for meals daily. The federal government has extended the National School Lunch Waiver so that all students will be entitled to receive a free lunch next year. So as a result, we have reflected that in our forecast. That reduces that local revenue, but it, it increases the federal revenue or the reimbursement we were receiving from the federal government under that program. I will point out that under state revenues, we've now budgeting a slight increase in our evidence-based funding. Even though the governor's initial budget had a flat funding amount for state aid and for evidence-based funding in particular, the state legislature actually passed an increase in evidence-based funding of about 300 million. So this, this was kind of surprising for us that, that even with the governor's initial budget having no increase, we were able to see an increase in the EBF funding. The 800,000 is about what we've received in prior years when, when the states passed a similar $300 million increase in evidence-based funding. So finally, I'll, I'll point out, obviously, the largest change and largest positive in change for us has been the increase in federal revenue. So initially in February, we expected to receive some ESER funding through the ESER II funding program, but ESER III had not been passed yet. So this new budget that is updated as of today includes an increase in federal revenue related to the ESER funds. It also includes that 4.7 million related to lunch revenues, and it includes a 3.7 mil, or includes about $1.7 million in E-rate funding. And we'll cover it in a little bit, why we're budgeting an increase in E-rate funding, but that is for a network switch project that the board approved at the April 12th board meeting. Looking at where our, how our expenditures have changed since we initially presented in February, you'll see corresponding with the increase in revenues, we're increasing expenditures by about 7.2 million from that initial budget and really increases across all line items with the exception of benefits. And we will go into those changes specifically to salary benefits now. I'll point out that our initial budget in February, again, was before that ESER money was available. And at the time, we were projected to decrease our full-time equivalents by about 14 teachers. This was really decreasing along with a projected decrease in enrollment. So although we are still projecting a decrease in enrollment for next year with the ESER funds, we're now able to increase FTE or projected FTE by 27.8 positions for next year. The focus of this has been in targeted areas designed specifically to address learning loss as a result of this pandemic. The three main areas we're targeting is a reduction in class sizes at the K through two levels. We're targeting hiring three district-wide coordinators in the area of mental health, literacy, and math. And then we've added a variety of positions at our middle and high school levels focused on reaching some of those most at-risk students and families. And these are positions such as academic coaches, community engagement specialists, and interventionists. Long-term, our plan is to keep the K-2 class size reduction in those district-wide positions. We'll fund those positions for three years with the federal ESER funding before transitioning them to local funds. Some of the, the positions at the middle and high school level, we're looking at those as more of a one-year solution to help address, again, student learning loss and some of the impact of the pandemic. So with that said, even though we're adding 27.8 FTE, we are actually budgeting a slight decline in benefit expenses. And that is really a result of us changing benefit providers with the start of the 2021 calendar year. As a result of that change, which the board approved last fall, we were initially anticipating about a $4 million budget savings in our benefits expense. We have achieved that, and we were actually running a little bit above that savings. And so we've been able to pass that savings on or, or continue to budget for that savings in, in next fiscal year. At the time when we presented that February forecast, we had only one month of experience and weren't in a position to fully budget or, or capture that, that savings. But I'm happy to report that we have met expectations with that change in benefit providers. I do want to cover some of the purchasing challenges we've had, again, as a result of both the Consumer Price Index as, as well as some supply chain challenges that we've seen. And again, this is really our experience at the district reflecting what I think our community and our board is, is hearing in, in the news on a pretty regular basis. So again, we initially, when we passed that network switch replacement project or asked the board to approve that in April, we were hoping to get that done before June 30th and have that as part of this fiscal year. Unfortunately, we've, we're now looking at receiving those network switches and doing that installation in August or September of this school year. So that expense, along with the budgeted E-rate funds that comes with it, are now in fiscal year 2022's budget. Similarly, we had asked the board to approve a contract for about 280,000 to purchase the white activity buses, which we use for a variety of programs at our high school levels. This again was a purchase we, we hoped and anticipated having in place by June 30th. Again, there's been a delay throughout the trucking and car industry, and we now expect to receive those buses again later this summer, early fall. And then finally, just, just additional 300,000 has been added to the, the budget for other supplies and materials. June is traditionally a very busy time for us purchasing and preparing for next school year. We try and get all our goods in by June 30th, which gives our teachers and administration the, the peace of mind that those materials will be here when they return in early August, and they will have the time to, to, you know, utilize them and get them set up and ready for that first day of school. We are, again, whether it's other, other hardware or, or different technology things or, or other furniture or equipment purchases, we are seeing delays that, that are impacting our ability to get some of those purchases done by that June 30th deadline. The second piece again is going back to the, the rising prices we're seeing. We do a large refresh of our Chromebooks, which are done on a three-year cycle. So every three years, we're replacing about a, we're replacing a Chromebook or we're replacing a third of the fleet each year. We saw about a 10% increase in the cost of Chromebooks this year, and we did not increase the registration fee that, that's used to offset that. So that is a, a direct expense to the district. The board this evening approved our insurance renewals for next school year. We saw about a 15% increase across the board. That's really about consistent with what we've seen with other districts. Everybody's seeing at least a 13 to 15% increase. And the one area that, you know, everybody's getting some real sticker shock is with cyber liability insurance, which has increased, you know, in the range of 3, 4, or 500%. And then finally, 2.5% increase in transportation, which sounds a little low compared to some of those other percentages. But again, that is above what we're receiving on our property tax increase this year. And with transportation being about $20 million budget line item each year, you know, that does represent about a $500,000 increase. So next, I just want to move into our non-operating forecast. And again, this represents our debt service and capital projects budgets. These are the two funds that are not included in those operating ratios that we looked at earlier and that drive the district's financial profile score from the State Board of Education. We continue over the next three years to make debt service payments of about $27 million a year and have a related property tax levy associated with those debt service payments. We are making debt service payments at that consistent level through, through December 30th of 2026. The remaining expenditures in here then do relate to capital projects. And we presented at the last budget meeting here in late April what our plans were for the fiscal year 2022 capital projects plan. We look forward to coming to the board this December with an updated capital plan for some of those out years. But as, as the board knows, we, we do have a significant list of deferred maintenance plant, deferred maintenance projects that will be included in that plan. I will point, just looking at the fund balance for these two non-operating funds, we are starting fiscal year 22 with a fund balance of about 55 million. The amount in capital is over 40 million. So as a result of being able to transfer some money into the capital projects fund the last couple of years, as well as not really accomplishing many projects in the past year as a result of COVID, we do now have a significant balance, and we'll be looking to aggressively tackle that deferred project list. So a final slide this evening, just want to update some future activities and, that we can expect as we adopt that 2022 budget. Before I do that, I, I do have to mention one thing related to our administrative cost calculation. And this is a, this is a required calculation that is done by the state board in an attempt to try and keep districts from increasing their administrative cost budget at a rate greater than the rest of their, their budget. And, and they look for when your administrative costs increase by 5%. One of the challenges as we prepared for this uncertain school year is that we budgeted not knowing what our final administrative costs would be last year and what we would need this year. And we actually did pass a budget where our administrative costs increased by greater than 5% of last year's expenditures. Now that we're far enough into the year, I, I can report that we will not be above that 5% increase when we look at actual numbers. And we've updated the state board as such, and they say that, that, that's sufficient to meet this requirement. But they did ask that I communicate to the board that we're working on that and, and are going to be able to successfully meet that administrative cost requirement. Just a little bit of a comment, it is a pretty antiquated requirement that, that has been under, you know, some challenges in the past, but as of now, we, we still comply with it, and we will be compliant for this previous school year. With that said, we will update the board if there's any significant changes to these assumptions or updates. I will be presenting an initial budget at the July 19th board meeting. We'll be presenting a tentative budget, which will be approved by the board at the August 23rd board meeting, at which time it'll be posted on our website and available for public inspection for the required 30 days. And that, and then the final step for approving a budget is to do a public budget hearing, which we will do prior to the September 27th board meeting. And then at that time, we will ask the board to approve that as our legal budget for the 2122 school year. So with that, I will take any questions.
Ms. Grover? Ms. Fazdik?
No questions.
Mr. Carrubus?
Yeah. Give me a second. Slide 10. This was a question asked by a prior board member, and I think it's important enough for, to discuss here. On, in that slide, we see that, that we're increasing our FTEs, and that's been funded with federal funds. And we're using that to try to reduce class sizes. Could you speak to our ability to maintain the class size reduction after the reduction of those federal funds?
Sure. So that's been a very big focus of the, the ESER funds when, when, you know, I talk with my counterparts in other districts, is how we are going to use this infusion of federal funds, use them effectively for the, the three-year period which we're eligible to use them, and then be able to, to deal with, with them going away in that, that fourth year. So I, I will say that's, that's part of the reason we're only committing to one year of those middle and high school positions because realistically, we cannot compete, we cannot budget or, or commit to funding all these positions. So, you know, really, really it's a situation where we had to kind of pick and choose what, what we could keep for one year, what we could keep for three years, and what we could potentially or, or hope to keep or, at this point, plan to keep, I should say, in perpetuity. And at, at this time, we are confident that we can keep the K-2 class size positions and those three district-wide positions funded with federal funds for the first three years and then with local funds thereafter. But that is a, that is a definite challenge that we're, that we're aware of. And that's why we, with some of the other positions at the middle and the high school level, we're only committing to them for that first year.
Thank you. Slide 13. I have no objection to you getting rid of the July presentation and just going right to the tentative budget. Do you see any value in proceeding with the initial budget presentation when we've kind of had the forecast? And, you know, I think we're on a level of initial budget presentation. Obviously, there's some deltas and variables that have been progressing our budget, and we have a lean budget that requires revisions to, to monitor, so. But what, what are your thoughts on that?
If the board does not want to hear from me in July, I have no problem seeing you in August. I, I would agree that at this point, I don't see a lot changing between now and July 19th, where we would be providing a lot of new information or value at that July meeting. So I can recommend to the board we remove that presentation at this time, and if something changes with that. changes with that, you know, we can always put it back on. And I guess the only thing is unless there's a specific topic that a board member would like me to speak to in July.
I think it's something that maybe the superintendent and the president can consider further. I was just trying to be efficient with our board time. Do you see any value in Ms. Grover working on a resolution to change the definition of recognition to include a different variable on fund balances, so that it measures the low point, or that it measures an average or different figure?
I think it's worth pursuing. I will say, one of the challenges with that fund balance calculation, when we compare with other districts, is a lot of districts in this state operate on a cash basis of accounting. We are not on a cash basis, we are on an accrual basis. Districts that are on an accrual basis can make different assumptions about their levy, so they can choose to recognize all of the money from that levy in one fiscal year or the other. We select to recognize it at 50/50, you know, because that, you know, most accurately reflects when we receive the funds. And, you know, the final variable, again, when you look at over 800 districts in the state of Illinois, is that there's a lot of different counties who all do things, distribute those property tax funds a little differently. And there are districts that don't rely on property taxes nearly as much as we do and rely a lot more on state funds. So I think that the current, the current ratio is a little misleading, and I think anything we could do to bring a little bit more comparability would be helpful. I do think that starting with a low point would be a good start. That does create a challenge on ISB's side, because that's not necessarily data they'd have in front of them. You know, it's easy for them to take a year-end number right off of a June 30th report that everybody's required to file, for example, whereas that low point, you know, for us, it's May, there may be districts where that's April, there may be other districts where that's December, I'm not 100% sure. So I think it would be worth exploring, I just would be interested where that conversation goes. I don't know that there's an easy solution that I could point to.
Lastly, in prior presentations, I think we have seen our low point, and that expressed as a fund balance, and that expressed as a dollar figure. I think there's value in presenting that and giving that information to the board, at least in that May or prior to May presentation, because I think all of us as a household like to know when we are at our low point, to make sure that we have enough funds to make payroll, so.
Yep. Yeah, that's something we can provide. And again, it is, our low point is generally, well, right now, late May, early June, and at least in the current year, it was a little over $50 million, which again, it comes to about 60 days of revenues.
Thank you.
Ms. Jane?
Just a comment to echo what Justin just mentioned on slide 10 regarding the intention to keep hiring our new K-2 teachers for at least three years and hopefully for the long run. How many are we hiring next year, K-2?
You know, I can look that number up or get back to you, or definitely, Dr. Tally may have it on the tip of his tongue, so I'll go to him.
But I don't have that information. We might, Ms. Laura Rosenbloom is here tonight, I'm not putting her on the spot, but she might have that information, and if not, we'll get back to you.
Thank you. No other questions.
So I have no questions. I've looked at the budget multiple times now, and thank you for continuing to manage and guide us in the right direction here, so thank you. Next is our fall plans update, presented by Dr. Tally, Mr. Akarius, Mr. Hillman, and
As they come out, I'll just give this intro. Tonight, our team will talk about the plans for the new school year as of today, June 14th. Planning for the new school year actually started back in late December, early January, especially at the high school level. Plans had to begin back in late December because of the class sections that students were selecting, and the complexity of creating the master schedule. Middle school follows right behind that, and then elementary. Our decisions that we will share tonight are based upon some of the learnings we have gathered this school year, input from some parent groups, and requirements that the state has in place as of today, June 14th. Though I know Mr. Akarius will mention it in his presentation, it cannot be said enough that we must follow the requirements from the state, and we are basing our decisions upon the current requirements. We do know that things will change this summer, and when they do, we will modify our plans accordingly. On Wednesday, June 16th, I will join a group of superintendents testifying to the Illinois State Board of Education about some mitigation measures that we feel need to be changed and/or modified. These measures include mask-wearing, social distancing protocols, lunch protocols, and other measures. ISB has not come out with new guidance yet, and we feel the need for ISB to make its decisions known now. There are fiscal implications related to them delaying their decisions, and more importantly, some decisions that have an impact on the social-emotional learning of our children. As we have done all this past school year, we will modify our protocols based upon what the state tells us to do, therefore, know that what is shared tonight is based upon what we know today, with changes coming throughout the summer. I will now turn the presentation over to Mr. Akarius, our deputy superintendent, Ms. Laura Rosenbloom, assistant superintendent for elementary, and Mr. Brad Hillman, assistant superintendent for middle school and high school for the next few days.
Great. Thank you. Good evening, Board of Education members and Dr. Tally. Thank you for allowing us time this evening to provide some information about our fall plans for the 2021-2022 school year. As Dr. Tally stated, I'm joined this evening by Laura Rosenbloom and Brad Hillman, whom will each discuss some specifics regarding their levels. Also, as Dr. Tally said, it's important to note that the information we are presenting is based on current information from the CDC, IDPH, ISBE, and DuPage County Health Department. We anticipate and hope that the current mandates and requirements and guidance change during the summer to provide us with more flexibility and allows us to utilize our buildings to effectively meet our educational goals. I know Dr. Tally will be advocating for that and speaking about that with the state. Our 2021-22 goal is to support a comprehensive educational program for the 2021-2022 school year with the current requirements provided by local, state, and federal health and safety When we submitted this, it wasn't Friday yet, and as you know, on Friday, the state did move to Phase 5, which reduced mask requirements and increases capacities at events, increases different types of events. However, there has been no updated guidance for schools as of yet. We have a lot of pressing questions that we continue to hear, and so I just wanted to take a slide on each of these, just to give information of where it's at at this point in time. So each of the following slides will address one of these questions. Why can't students choose to stay remote? You know, originally, on May 19th, we had sent out to parents asking for a medical exemption, because we felt like at that time, we knew that we needed all students in person. We find that that's the best way to teach most of our students, is going to be in person. And the most recent guidance we had at the state at that time, prior to May 19th, was that all students should be in person unless they have a medical exemption. That same night, the ISBE did pass a resolution, and so while in that resolution, it doesn't really say much about a medical exemption, it does have some keywords in there, which is remote instruction be made available for students who are not eligible for a COVID-19 vaccine and are under a quarantine ordered by a local public health department. So this has been quite a few discussions also with our council to talk about how we handle that. But the state has made it clear that, and we feel that students need to be in person for learning. Are vaccinations required for age-eligible students? No, students are not currently required. Any decision about requiring vaccinations would come from the state and would not be a local decision. Are masks required for students? Actually, masks are still required in school districts. That has not changed yet, and that was confirmed on the May 17 announcement to be in line with CDC guidance, so that has not changed for schools. It has changed for a lot of different venues, but not for schools at this point in time Will self-certification continue? The current plan for the 21-22 school year, since we have not heard a change of, that we need to discontinue self-certification, but our current plan will be to have parents do it once before the start of each quarter. It's really a reminder in having them say yes, they'll make sure that they're looking if their child has any kind of symptoms, you know, so that they are keeping their child home from school that day. But it'll be once per quarter, so at the beginning of the second quarter, we'll do it again, and beginning of the third quarter, so will not be a daily self-certification. Will exposed students be quarantined? So our current guidance is that fully vaccinated students or staff, and if they're asymptomatic, so they do not have symptoms, they're not required to quarantine if named as a close Any other person at this point in time, if they're not vaccinated, if they were within six feet of a confirmed case of COVID-19 for a cumulative of 15 minutes or more over a 24-hour period during the infectious period, will still need to quarantine. That's still the current guidance, and we're all, you know, we are curious if the state is going to do anything different with that guidance, either changing the distance or any of those measures. What will learning look like for quarantined students? Due to the current state superintendent resolution, only students ineligible for the vaccine and quarantined are allowed to receive remote learning. The current plan is that all students in grades three and up will continue to have access to Google Classroom and stay current with assignments. K-2 will have choice boards to continue their learning. Early childhood will send home activities related to the current unit of study, and in addition, school staff will follow up with quarantined students to check in on their progress. We've also been working recently on looking at other opportunities for some remote instruction for our students that do fall into that category, actually quite a bit at the elementary level, to see how we can support those learners, because we do, you know, we're hoping we don't have as many students quarantined next year, but we still do feel very responsible, obviously, for their education and to continue their growth, and we're looking at all opportunities to do that. What are the physical distancing requirements for lunch? And the reason that I, we specifically put lunch on here is this has been and was a challenge for us next year, and right now, would be a huge challenge for us this upcoming year, because the guidance that is in place, the guidance and, I should say, requirements in place are that while you're eating in the schools, you have to be six feet apart when that mask is off, and you have to all be facing the same direction. That has created huge challenges for us, and I do hope that some of that guidance changes, because currently, you're going to see in the schedules, how we're going to make that work is very challenging, and probably not the way that we would do it if we were not in a pandemic. The rest of our contact, I should say, our social distancing, we haven't seen any changes, which is now down to, we can go down to three feet with our students, with their desks in the classroom and so on, and we haven't heard if there's going to be any change in guidance on that. Will volunteers be allowed in schools? Yes, the plan for the 2021-22 school year is that parent volunteers will be allowed in school buildings as necessary. All volunteers entering the building must follow all school COVID mitigation procedures, which may include wearing a mask, whether vaccinated or not. As of this point in time, we've heard that in schools, we're wearing masks, and so if we have volunteers in the building, they would have to follow those same procedures that everybody else in the school is expected to follow. If we hear that those mitigation procedures change, we would most likely apply those to our volunteers as well. Another big question we get is what happens if schools do not follow ISBE mandates or health department guidance? Schools that do not follow ISB, Illinois State Board of Education mandates or requirements can have their state funding withheld. That goes towards all different mandates that we get from the state. And schools that do not follow local health department guidance can be shut down by the health department, as well as experience liability concerns if they neglect to follow the guidance. So oftentimes, if they feel like you're negligent in following what they tell you to do, you could put yourself at risk. So from here, I'll go ahead and pass it on to Laura Rosenbloom.
Great. Good evening, Board members and Superintendent Tally. It's my pleasure to share with you the outcome of our work with teachers, parents, and administrators as we plan for the upcoming school year. We are pleased to be returning in as many ways as possible to our pre-pandemic schedules, routines, and structures. There is one thing, though, that we will definitely be keeping from the pandemic, and that's the relationships that we formed with students and families. Many teachers reported that they got to know their students in some very different and new ways this year, like they actually got a chance to see the family pet, or they got to see grandma who lives in the home with the student, or they got to see the little sibling join in the PE lesson. The great thing is parents said that they also got to know their child's teachers better too. During the remote learning, they might have seen the teacher's family pet, and some students are still asking to see those pets, and can they bring them to school? But I think the other thing that parents really reported and shared with us is that when we were remote, we learned how our kid really does in school. We got to see what our children were actually learning, how they learn, how they interact, and how they behave. The insight into school was tremendous, so we will definitely take these partnerships and perspectives forward with us. For early childhood, as we look forward to the 2021-2022 school year, we will focus on connecting with students and families. One of the most important things parents do is complete a developmental screening for their child. This provides staff information about the child's current level of performance, which is really helpful for staff as they plan their instruction. We also know that two areas that students have always benefited from, but are even more important this year after the physical distancing restrictions, are language skills and peer interactions. The early childhood staff will continue to provide opportunities for students to interact with each other and use their language skills. These will be two areas of focus in addition to SEL. One of the main ways that our early childhood staff focus on SEL is with the creation of positive classroom communities, and the second way is using the PaaS curriculum, which is promoting alternative thinking strategies. And finally, they will continue to use positive behavior interventions and universal supports. They'll teach students again what it means to be ready, be respectful, and be safe. Next slide, please. Early childhood is very excited to return to their pre-pandemic schedule, which will include snack, motor, even the playground as part of students' daily schedule. We know how important consistency and routines are for our early childhood students. Next slide. In terms of space considerations, early childhood has been able to work out the details necessary for our return. For example, instead of snack being a whole group activity, students will eat snack either individually or in very small groups. individually or in very small groups spaced apart in the classroom at separate tables. Snack could occur during center time or at a separate time during the day. For centers, the time will be a scheduled rotation throughout the classroom with students assigned to specific centers. Or the class will be split so that half the class participates in centers while the other half of the class participates in circle time. And for the hallways, we'll continue to use the floor markings and staying to the right, and transitions will be continued to be staggered within the building. At the elementary level, we are also excited to return to our pre-pandemic schedules and routines. We're going to continue our quest to reengage families and to place an emphasis on social emotional wellness. This August, we will provide additional support for identified families who are unable to be fully engaged throughout the year. Schools will be reaching out to the families to connect with them, to understand what each student needs to smoothly transition back to school. School staff will design plans based on the student and family need. Each school has also made it a priority to focus on the best ways to reconnect with students and families when we return. We're going to have our traditional kindergarten start to the year again. Where on the first day of school, it's a transition day. Our kindergartners will have the chance to come at a scheduled time in small groups with their families to do an activity, meet the teacher, see the classroom, put their schools away, all the things our students need to have a first, great first day in kindergarten. In addition, we will be screening students in August to help us best meet their needs. In terms of an SEL emphasis, we will continue building those strong relationships within the school like the ones I mentioned earlier, and we will continue to implement our Second Step program to ensure all students are receiving a solid foundation in social emotional learning. In addition, schools will refresh their PBIS systems as it looked different during the pandemic. We've seen how beneficial our tiered systems of support are for students and look forward to re-engaging in that further. And another way we're meeting, as Mr. Shipley already mentioned, the academic and social emotional needs of students, is by reducing class sizes for our kindergarten, first, and second graders. This year, we'll have an average of 25 students per class, and we are really looking forward to the positive impact that we know this will have on students. All elementary schools will be in session full day with pre-pandemic hours. Next slide, please. Thank you so much. With pre-pandemic hours, this will include a return to our pre-pandemic specials and core classes, ELA, math, science, social studies, the works. Next slide. Space considerations at the elementary do also mostly center around lunch, as Mr. Akarius mentioned. We are hopeful that updated guidance will come out over the summer that would alleviate some of the challenges. In the meantime, our solutions include having lunch indoors utilizing a variety of spaces, the MPR, the gym, the stage. It really depends on the number of students that the school has at each grade level, how many spaces we may need to utilize. Students may be seated at desks or tables or eat picnic-style on a towel or mat on the floor. We saw this year that students liked and were successful with picnic-style eating, and parents on our committee felt it was very important that we all be flexible with seating because all students being able to return to school full-time is important. There may be additional lunch sessions to accommodate all students at six feet apart, so some schools may have lunch starting earlier and ending a little bit later than we've done in the past. And then another solution is to have half of the students eat in the classroom and half eat in the lunchroom. Again, parents on our committee talked about the importance of socializing at school, and so part of our solution would be to rotate students so they would all have an opportunity to be in the lunchroom. Each school does have a slightly different layout and number of students per grade level, so they will each be developing a plan that meets their needs following the IDPH guidance. This also could require additional lunch supervision, so we will continue to make efforts to find that coverage. We have at times noticed that it's been difficult to find lunch supervisors, so we do have a plan for recruiting more. And then the last thing we're doing to save space in terms of lunch is we're going to do a grab-and-go lunch like this year. It worked very well, and the hot lunch carts actually take up a lot of space, so this provides more space so we can fit more students in the lunchroom. And then we will be waiting on further guidance in regard to the isolation rooms because that would provide another space for us to use for students. We're very excited about the work we're doing to ensure student success for the 2021-2022 school year, and next you'll hear about the work at the middle school level.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Tally. Thank you for the opportunity to address the board tonight and to share the work of the middle school leadership group and the high school leadership group in preparing for the start of the 21-22 school year. As was referenced by Mrs. Rosenblum, the middle school and high school plans were developed collaboratively and reviewed with parents, teachers, and administrators at both levels. The tentative plans that were developed by the reopening leadership group and that are being reviewed with you tonight will allow us to be very close to our pre-pandemic environment. At the middle school level, due to the restrictions that are currently in place with lunch and not knowing when and if they will be removed, lunch was the first hurdle that the middle school reopening leadership group addressed. And as you will see, it allows us to be more intentional and dedicated to the social and emotional needs that students might have upon returning to school. The middle school will be adding another period within their regularly scheduled time of eight to three. This period called ACHIEVE will be coupled with lunch at the grade level. Approximately one-half of the grade level will be eating lunch while the other is in the ACHIEVE period. Then the two will switch. Those who are eating lunch will go to ACHIEVE, and those in ACHIEVE will go to lunch. By doing so, we are reducing our numbers in lunch and reducing the need for more alternative eating locations. You will also notice, though, that lunch will start significantly earlier in the day and also end much later in the day. The ACHIEVE period, though, is more than just a means of reducing the numbers of students at lunch. It will serve as a mechanism to ensure that we are meeting the SEL needs of our students. The period will require student interaction to include the use of our Second Step program, focus on positive academic habits as we look to re-norm what it means to be a productive student. Interventions for any struggling students will take place during that time, and we will also be using it for general check-ins. There is currently a group of middle school leaders working to provide a framework for this period to ensure that it meets the needs of our students. Next slide, please. Additionally, we will have parent and community engagement, parent, community, and engagement specialists at all middle schools that will be increasing the connection with families and schools. They will have staggered work hours to be available until 6:00 PM on a daily basis to connect with families outside of the typical school hours. Academic and instructional coaches will work with students and staff on increasing student engagement and connectedness to school as we work to re-norm what it means to be a student and to ensure that positive school habits are being embedded into lessons and that the work that the students must do independently. Interventionists will work directly with students that were referenced by teams as having skill gaps when compared to their peers. They will work at providing that extra support in addition to what the classroom teacher is already providing. With that, we also do have some space considerations that we had to take care of as well. While we have taken steps to alleviate the issues at lunch, we will still need alternative spaces for students to eat. When adding the 10th period, we reduced some room utilization issues within the building by having all periods on the same bell schedule as opposed to a staggered schedule that we used previously. And finally, we are still waiting to see if isolation rooms for students with COVID-like symptoms is going to be required. In a similar vein, at the high school level, we have been focusing on the 21-22 school year as well, and we will address SEL and learning in the following ways. Schools are offering credit recovery options throughout the summer to make efforts to partner with schools, partner with students and get them back on track. June credit recovery is occurring right now. Hybrid of in-person and online options are focusing on students that are very close to completion, identifying the skills or content that the students need to demonstrate mastery, and then working to gather that evidence. Then in July, we are going to be offering a more intense in-person experience. This is going to fix some of the credit recovery that June sessions did not complete, and more full-credit course recovery using formative assessment to determine what students already know, and then using a combination of digital material through our credit recovery vendor and the teacher-created materials to guide students through courses or through a course or courses. And then finally, in the fall, we will have a plan to extend as well, working to identify which students and what courses will need the most support. This will be a little bit, this will be a little different at each school and will be tailored to the school's needs. Additionally, we are going to be using School Connect. This is the primary resource that the high schools use to develop their Tier One direct instruction lessons for social emotional learning. School Connect lessons are distributed over four modules that are identified on the screen. This is tied to the CASL framework that the district has adopted as its guide for social emotional learning. Additionally, we're looking at academic habits of success. This is going to be explicit instruction through the first semester of next year related to rebuilding academic habits and focusing on the aspects of Portrait of a Graduate. This will include explicit instruction around connection and collaboration, student advocacy, organization, perseverance and resilience, reflection, and then giving and receiving feedback. Then when it comes to the schedule, we are going to be returning to the pre-pandemic bell schedule. Up on the board is the bell schedule for Matia Valley for the 19-20 school year. All three high schools are going to be returning to that bell schedule. You will notice that we will be offering all periods along with PLC time on Wednesday, and we will not be using the block schedule that we have been utilizing for the second half of this school year. High school also has some issues with space concerns as well. You'll notice that lunch is referenced there. We are considering, and I would like to highlight, underline, bold, and put a flashing arrow all around the word "considering," open campus for juniors and seniors. We first, before we make that decision, need to see what the expectations are going to be from ISBE and also IDPH before we begin having a conversation about extending that. But that could be a potential solution for our lunch issues that we have, along with finding alternative spaces for eating. That room utilization issue is up there because we simply just don't know what lunch is going to look like, and potentially if there are some other classes that we need to offer due to some credit recovery issues that some of our students have. Hopefully, we will have all of those cleaned up in June and July. That is definitely the goal. And then finally, we have the space concern of the isolation room, just like the other two levels there, there, there as well. And with that, I'll return it to Mr. Akarius.
Great. Just finally, we want to talk about some additional supports that we are planning for next year. One will be increased summer learning 2022. We will provide three summer learning coordinator stipends, one per level, to coordinate a more robust summer learning program for the following year. You know, this year, there were a lot of changes throughout the year, and people were tired. And so it was a challenge to get people to take advantage of a lot of our summer learning opportunities this year. It is happening. We do have a good number of students, but we do think we can make a more robust program for the following year. To address some things with some of the unfinished learning is cross-grade level articulation regarding curriculum and individual student learning, trying to look at what that looks like from grade level to grade level and what things we still need to address. We're also looking at an increase in differentiated instruction, professional learning opportunities. We know students, students always come in at different places. We think that's going to be even more varied as they approach next year, depending on what their experiences were. And so a little bit of going back and looking at how do we differentiate our instruction for all students? We're also looking at increased mental health supports for next year. We're looking at our multi-tiered system of supports. It's been called RTI in the past. It's now referred to as MTSS, and we're looking at a system to help us in piloting that. We are also looking at a new assessment that might give us more and better information and resources. And then we're also focusing on how we can increase STEM or STEAM integration. Our first focus is really looking at that, where we can add at the elementary level, and then how can we expand on what we're doing at middle school and high school? So those are all additional supports we're also looking at for next year to support our students and, you know, addressing any kind of concerns connected to this pandemic. As you could tell, we keep in mind our Portrait of a Graduate, social emotional learning, and our equity, diversity, and inclusion. And with that, we're able to take questions.
Ms. Fazdek.
I don't think I have questions at this time, especially considering there may be alterations going forward. Thank you for this information.
Okay. Ms. Grover.
Slide five, please. So in reading what ISBE says currently with the remote instruction being made available for students who are not eligible for the vaccine and a quarantine, I read it as, just me personally, read it as pertaining to elementary students. And we had talked about Google Classrooms and choice boards for elementary students. Can you explain what that is, how that differs from the Zoom that they're currently doing, or is it the same thing?
No, it is different, although yet it's similar. So I guess it's the same in terms of they've been using Google Classroom. And for our through-to-fifth graders, they use it beautifully because they can read, right? So the directions are there, they can follow them, they can easily complete and do the work. For our primary students, our teachers were investing a lot of time in doing audio directions or video directions, like having to create a lot of things to go with the Google Classroom because many of the students couldn't access the information by reading it themselves. So we're really looking at some activities that will be very familiar, but yet provide that challenge for students through the choice boards, and also things that they are familiar with, but that will also advance their learning at the same time. So we're kind of taking a slightly different approach based on what students are capable of doing. And then as Mr. Akarius mentioned, we're looking at what kind of physical or visual teacher support that we can be providing in addition to that.
We are hoping that there's quite a bit less quarantined students next year. I know we've been advocating as well that when the CDC moved to three feet, that, you know, it would make sense for contact tracing to also move to three feet, which would also reduce that. We haven't seen any guidance on that, but we are hoping that we see, especially with the lower positivity rates, with the higher number of vaccinations and stuff, that in general, we're hoping that we see quite a few, quite a bit less of students being quarantined.
Have they said if the quarantine is 10 days or 14 days?
So they haven't made any decisions on that, but the, why there has been some confusion around the 14 and 10 is, you're only allowed to reduce it to 10 if you can ensure that anybody returning from quarantine, if you can guarantee that there'll be six feet of physical distancing when they return. And we could not guarantee that once we reduce down to three feet. So that's why we had to keep it at 14. So if you could guarantee that you would have six feet of physical distancing and you'd have to check that student for symptoms or that person for symptoms every day for those four days beyond that 10-day, those were the requirements that were put in place of what you could do if you wanted to decrease from 14 to 10. With seeing the percentage of our students that we're expecting, you know, pretty much 99% of our students to be in person next year, and so we would not be able to ensure, if the guidelines all stayed the same, we would not be able to ensure that we could keep six feet of physical distancing for students returning from quarantine. I hope that makes sense.
Yeah. My comment also is I appreciate the focus on SEL for the students that are returning. That's really wonderful. Mr. Hellman, I wanted to ask you about middle school. I noticed ACHIEVE, and currently, middle schools have advisory. Is that similar, is ACHIEVE similar to advisory that the middle schools currently have?
Yes. The only difference is, is that advisory sometimes has, in certain buildings, they have the ability to kind of use it or not. And it takes away from team time and is embedded with inside the team's schedule. In this particular case, we are making it a defined period that will happen every day and that will be on a student's schedule when it is listed. So because it is a little bit of a different way of addressing the SEL component, we simply decided to give it a different name so that way there wouldn't be any confusion as to what the expectations were associated with the period.
what the expectations were associated with the period.
And my last question is, with the School Connects, is that integrated into the high school periods, or is it separate?
It is integrated as a Tier One piece that's associated with their academic coursework. So it's always looking back and talking about how to be self-aware, self-management, how to address conflict, and all those things are embedded within side of the Tier One academic content.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Ms. Jane.
I'll start off with a comment that I had the privilege, along with Allison, to visit many of the elementary schools, middle schools, and high schools in the last few weeks. And I will say that by visiting these buildings, I have a whole new appreciation of the logistical gymnastics all of you guys are performing on a consistent basis throughout this year and as we're moving forward. So I thank you for that because I really do see the uniqueness and complications each building's hold and how following the guidelines becomes increasingly complicated with that. So my first question for Mr. Akarius is, if ISBE changes the regulations, how will that benefit us at this point with scheduling and spacing?
Well, I think there's a couple of different areas that that would benefit us. One, if they change it, if they change some of the guidance regarding either physical distancing or contact tracing, you know, as we're trying to plan to meet the needs of the students who are being quarantined, obviously, that could significantly reduce that number. So that's one area that we would see as a benefit. I think right now, one of the things we would try to look at right away, even though, I mean, the high schools and middle schools start very early on in trying to develop those schedules and figure out how to make things work. I think if that lunchroom changing first, hopefully not facing all the same direction because that creates a huge challenge for us, but then the six feet creates a huge challenge, we, I mean, we don't want to be starting lunch at 9:27 in the morning. We're already thinking, how are we going to do a snack later in the day? How are we going to do this? And so those, I think, would be some things we try to look at right away, but I still think there's going to be, you know, how do we figure that out? And Mr. Hellman, I don't know if you have any further?
So I don't necessarily know if we'll be changing the lunch periods at the middle school level. I don't want my assistant principals right now to start hyperventilating because the schedule is a very difficult thing to go back and fix, especially with the brand-new student information system for us. So, but what it will do, though, is decrease the amount of alternative spaces that we would have to have during lunch, and also decrease the number of alternative learning spaces that we would have to utilize in a regular class period because we wouldn't be under those same restrictions. Most of our classes we're going to be fine on, I would say probably 99%, but there are going to be one or two classes where we do have some unusually large numbers. And if we stay with the expectation of even three feet, it is going to be very tricky when it comes to how to fit all of those students in there. What it would really do is allow us to return back to, quote, "the pre-pandemic time," giving teachers some autonomy to be able to rearrange their rooms a little bit and make it so it's a little bit more conducive to group work, or to just feel like this is what school used to be when I was here the last time. Whereas right now, we have really put fixed rows, fixed seats, with very little teacher autonomy to be able to change those because there just isn't that, that space that's in the room. So it really will be more about the feel of school in many respects than it will be about some of the other bigger changes that we might not be able to make.
Okay, thank you. The other concern I had was with regard to the elementary population or those 12 and under who are not eligible for a vaccine, who are not being quarantined but have a medical condition. And right now, there isn't a space for them to learn remotely. Is that correct?
With our students who have the medical exemption, we are looking at, you know, any options that we have to support them through distance learning and what that would look like for us to do anything that was, you know, what we've referred to this last year as kind of remote learning. So we are looking at those options right now on how we can best meet those students' needs.
And my last question for Mrs. Rosenbloom is, on slide 14, you refer to universal support. Can you explain what that is?
Sure. So universal supports are things that all students receive. So like where we talked about be safe, be ready. So for example, they'll teach all students how to be ready to learn. So they might talk about it's eyes on the teacher, it's voices off, and it's sitting in your designated area. So just making sure that every student universally has access to those teachings and knows the expectations, and then just practicing them and acknowledging kids when they do right, the right thing, they're ready to learn. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for asking that question because a lot of times we use educational terms that other people might not be familiar with. So thank you. We, universally, you might also hear associated with like Tier One supports, that's what you do for all students.
Mr. Carubus.
Yes, just really a comment. The district has plans for the fall based upon the current guidance recommendation, requirements, and the district has plans for some of the anticipated changes in the guidance and requirements. Ultimately, I think the communication piece is going to be key, both now and as these things change. You know, from just a practical standpoint, we had two people in the audience, and they left before the presentation of the fall plans. We have 30 people watching online. You know, the community, the nation, is taking a breath, taking a breather, spending time with people they haven't been able to see, you know, doing some more traveling as things open up. So everyone is, you know, taking, taking some of that breath. I think the important part that we all need to consider is the potential disconnect between the governor saying we're in stage five and everything's opened up, and how that actually applies to schools. Because we're not in school, because we're not, the community hasn't seen that we still wear masks in here, and we still operate differently than you may elsewhere in the community. So the overall message is, I think, communication's going to be key, both after the school board meeting and as we do these additional presentations. Otherwise, we're going to have a large back-to-school push come August as people are going to be concerned about what's going to happen, feel surprised, and all we can do is communicate, and that's the best we can hope for with this. We have a plan, we have contingencies, we're communicating that out. I do think some of this is natural. We do need to have a break in things. So the lack of current engagement is kind of understandable, but we need to deal with that as we plan, knowing that we don't have the level of engagement. So what do we need to do additional? That's it.
Mr. Carubus, I will just say this, and they can, this morning, we had our cabinet meeting, and what was one of the topics that we talked about?
Communication.
Exactly right. So we're right on board with you.
I don't doubt that. Thank you.
Okay. So if you go back to slide 10, I think there's a lot of concern about what happens when kids are quarantined. And just to be clear, there's going to be no room and Zoom like we had before, right?
We are not currently planning on rooming and zooming.
Okay. So when someone gets quarantined, can you just describe a bit more, like at the elementary, middle, and high school level, what that would look like for the child that's at home?
And I think that's really what we're still working on, Ms. Donahue, is how we can, you're right, find that balance because we know that room and Zoom has been very difficult this year. Our teachers did a fabulous job making it work, and so did every one of our parents and our students. I mean, that's a credit to all of them. But we're looking at it away because that rotating of people in and out of the classroom on room and Zoom is really difficult and takes away from the instruction that's happening in the classroom. So we're looking to provide some synchronous and asynchronous opportunities for students while they're on quarantine. But we have looked at a variety of options for that, but it really is going to depend on what the ultimate guidance is from the state, too, in terms of what we'll be able to do. But I can tell you, the feedback that we got from the parents, too, was like, like, we're not teachers, and we've done our best this whole year, but we really want them to be able to connect with someone. So it's just looking at ways to do that without rooming and zooming.
Yeah, we're looking at, you know, licensed staff that can keep our students on target during that time, but we weren't really looking at the classroom teacher doing that while they're working with other students, you know, with students, you know, in the classroom at the same time.
Yeah, I think, you know, people always go to the extreme in their thinking, well, not all people, but some, and, you know, there's some people that picture their child will be sitting at home with no interaction with some workbooks or something. So I just, I know that we all are trying to make sure that the children that have to quarantine have proper support.
You're right, because we want them to keep learning. Like, that's the most important thing. And really, even the teachers on the committee were like, we just don't want them to get behind over right that time that they're quarantined. So we do all have that same commitment, it's just finalizing the details on how it'll work.
We did see the benefit of our, and that's why we identified on there, our third grade and up in the use of Google Classroom, so students can, it's a great communication tool for families and students to see what was going on in class, or what assignment was given, or how to stay current in that communication part. I think it'll be huge to help students stay focused, as well as some connection with the school on, you know, what are you struggling with, or what do you need help with, are you getting everything?
Okay. Then on slide 13, we talked about some of our concerns with respect to following guidance from ISBE, and I think it's worth repeating, although some people have received information in email or whatever, but we get about $50 million in funding from the state, right? Which some other surrounding school districts don't have that kind of revenue coming at the state level, so maybe don't have as great of concern about that, but for us, it is a significant amount of money for us to make sure we continue to receive. I also wanted to ask about the tents. So will we have tents in the fall?
We are very grateful that the board provided tents for us this year because it did make it possible to bring students back, but we did realize that it's not sustainable long-term. Weather is one of the things that's really a factor and an influence. Maintaining furniture out there and in and out also presented more of a challenge. So in terms of long-term sustainability and cost, we don't feel like that's the best solution going forward. But it definitely made it possible for us to bring kids back when we were able to do that.
So yeah, I experienced helping with one of the lunches one day when it was very cold. I'm like, oh, boy. It was very well organized, though, I will say, and the kids loved it.
They did. They really did.
All right. My last question is about community involvement. We've engaged parents in the discussions that we were sharing today, is that correct?
Yeah.
So how did we share, how did we involve them?
I had a Zoom meeting with them since we still weren't doing things in person, and I went over a lot of the information I shared with you, but also really just gave plenty of time to ask questions and understand their perspective.
And at the middle school and high school level, we included parents in both of those committees, providing feedback, giving us some, some critical comments about some of our plans, and telling us that there would be some things that they would accept as a stopgap for the end of this particular school year, but they didn't want to see moving forward as a collective group as far as an actual plan. So they were part of that. The other, both sets of parents at middle school and high school have also indicated that when the guidance does come out from the state, that when we gather the teachers that served on that committee along with the administrators, that they were very much looking forward to being a part of that conversation, and will be included again in the summer when we have more information from the state. We'll bring them back together, see how that could potentially alter the plans that we presented to you tonight, and get their feedback on that. And we will also be sending them all of that information that the state provides so they can come to those meetings well-prepared.
Thank you. That's an important concept for the board to make sure that we have community involvement in the discussions we're having with these plans. So thank you. I think that's it. Does anyone have any other questions or comment? Ms. Fazdak?
I'm sorry, I do have just one point of clarification, just from my own understanding and perhaps understanding of community members also. If I'm looking at slide 10, which is about the state student superintendent resolution, only students ineligible for the vaccine, that's medically ineligible? Am I reading that correctly?
No. So by ineligible, they're referring to currently, I believe it's students that are ages 12 and up who are eligible for the vaccine. So that would mean students under the age of 12 would not be eligible, and that's who they're referring to.
Okay. Is there any situation on a case-by-case basis by which we would have to examine if a student is medically ineligible for a vaccine and a quarantine?
Yes.
You could have, there could be on a case-by-case basis, a child who is medically ineligible. However, that question was asked at a state-level meeting, and we were told that there are no reasons for which someone is ineligible for a vaccine, at least on the CDC website. That's what we were told by the state. We'd have to go and check in, but it would be an individual basis. Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Our next item, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is our legislative advocacy, and we did talk about our ISBE resolution, but is there any other items to discuss? I need a motion to adjourn.
Adjourn.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.